Thirty seconds.
Six thirty.
Good evening. I'm calling the Monday, April twelfth, two thousand and twenty-one Planning Commission Meeting to Order. It is six thirty P M. Tonight's Planning Commission Meeting will be held virtually via Zoom webinar and conference call due to the state of local emergency for the COVID nineteen pandemic. Commission members and staff will participate in this meeting via telephone and video conference. As Chair, I will be leading the Planning Commission Meeting, and the public is welcome to participate when invited throughout the meeting. Members of the public may attend the meeting by joining in via online Zoom. If attendees experience audio problems, we suggest you leave the meeting and then rejoin. This is usually fixed the issue. Additional instructions on how to participate are posted online at W W W dot Burnsville M N dot G O V. In the public meeting calendar. As usual, tonight's meeting is available for viewing on B C T V and on the city's website. If you are unable to participate this evening and would like to submit public testimony, I encourage you to email your comments to city staff or mail your comments directly to City Hall. You may participate in the meeting tonight online by going to H T T P S colon backslash backslash zoom dot U S backslash join and typing in webinar I D nine four six five four nine nine seven eight three eight. Once you are logged into the meeting, please use the chat feature to tell the moderator which item you wish to speak to. You may also call into the meeting at six five one three seven two eight two nine nine and enter meeting I D nine four six five four nine nine seven eight three eight. For each public hearing, I will open a time when callers may speak to that item and will give more instructions at that time. Your call will be muted until then. Please note there may be a slight delay due to the differences in technology. If speaking by phone, please mute your computer since there may be a delay. Now onto the first item of our agenda, which is adoption of the agenda. I would like to see if the planning commissioners or city staff have any changes to this evening's agenda.
No changes from staff.
Girls, and I'm seeing no changes from the commissioners. So at this point, if I could have a motion to approve tonight's agenda. Commissioner Roberts?
I move to approve the agenda for tonight.
Thank you, and Commissioner Ward?
I second the motion.
All right, moved by Commissioner Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Ward, and if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Awad?
Aye.
Commissioner John?
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts?
Aye.
Commissioner Timmerman?
Aye.
And the motion carries. Thank you. All right, we will now look to approve the minutes from the last meeting, which was March twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one. Planning Commissioners or staff, any changes to the minutes from our last meeting?
No changes from staff.
All right, I'm not seeing anything from the commissioners either. So if we could have a motion to approve the minutes from the March twenty-second meeting, Commissioner Anderson?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you, sir, and Commissioner John?
I would like to second his motion.
All right, moved by Commissioner Anderson, seconded by Commissioner John. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Awad?
Aye.
Commissioner John?
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts?
Aye.
Commissioner Timmerman?
Aye, and the motion carries.
All right, on to agenda item number three, which is the application of Medical Management International Incorporated, doing business as Banfield Pet Hospital for a planned unit development amendment to add veterinary clinic slash hospital as a use allowed within the Aurora Village Shops at one six one nine Connor Road forty-two West. And City Planning Commissioner Deb Gerles will be presenting this evening. Ms. Gerles, you have the floor.
Thank you, commissioners. This is a public hearing this evening. It's really a minor type of planned unit development, but something that's needed in order for Banfield Pet Hospital to be able to relocate from their current space in Burnsville to the Aurora Village Shopping Center. And what they are requesting is a P U D amendment to allow veterinary clinic slash hospital as a use that's allowed within the Aurora Village Shops and that planned unit development. The use is allowed in the underlying B-three district, but because when the P U D was initially approved in nineteen ninety, the uses were different, so that is why we are looking at just adding that particular use to the P U D list of uses. Next slide, please. The subject site is zoned to B-three planned unit development, and basically everything north across County Road forty-two and to the west and east has similar zoning and land use. To the south, there are two apartment complexes, and the one of them is Chancellor Manor, and the other one is directly south of the Lifetime, or excuse me, L A Fitness Site. The entire P U D is about sixteen acres. Next slide. And you can see here, the Banfield Pet Clinic is in the northwestmost corner building. It's a multi-tenant building, and it's the former site of Burger Jones. Next slide, please. And this shows the site I just wanted to show for the public and for the Planning Commission. Directly south of the yellow circle is the outdoor patio that was built for Ban, or excuse me, for Burger Jones. The really, the only outdoor changes are going to be that they're going to remove kind of a canopy-type structure from that, and the patio is going to become a, an area for if their clients, you know, want to sit out there, but more so for their staff to be able to, be able to sit out on the patio. Next slide. This is the floor plan that is proposed, so they are totally rearranging the the floor plan, and Banfield Pet Hospital does not have overnight or long-term boarding, and they also do not have outdoor dog runs, so this is a use that's totally going to be taking all items occurring within the building itself, and they are going to have surgery suites. They do have indoor dog runs and kennels for animals, and basically an entire hospital facility. Next slide. This slide shows the existing exterior, the Burger Jones site. You can see on the corner and on the top left-hand side, we will be referring to that as the tower feature. And what is proposed to occur is all of the signage for Burger Jones is proposed to be changed out to signage for Banfield Pet Hospital. Next slide. And this is the site plan, and it just shows the various locations of the different signage along County Road forty-two, which would be the top of this screen. There are two signs. There's a monument sign and also a pylon sign with all of the tenants or most of the larger tenants within the shopping center. And then there are additional wall signs and some signage proposed for the parking lot. Next slide. This is the Banfield Pet Hospital site, and what they would like to do is to have two parking stalls, which are to the north of the site, and they're in green. They would like to have those designated as temporary and signed with Banfield Pet Clinic, just for folks to be able to park quickly and drop off animals and, and then retrieve them. Next slide. In terms of the proposal itself, really, the, the only items that we are really reviewing from a land use perspective would be related to the exterior changes, which is primarily signage. They will change out the awnings on the structure from the black awnings that were there previously to the orange awnings, and then they're looking at wall signage in this case. And they are showing two different colors, color schemes for the signage. They'll choose one or the other. With regard to the Burnsville sign ordinance, we don't regulate color or the content, so either of those options are acceptable from the city standpoint and the ordinance standpoint. Next slide. This would be the side of the building facing County Road forty-two to the north, and they are again just replacing the former Burger Jones signage. And then on the tower itself, Burger Jones actually had signage on two sides. They had it facing, on the left-hand slide, they had that one, which is facing the northeast, and then they also had facing the northwest, and only one sign is proposed at the tower for the Banfield Pet Clinic. Next slide. And this is what's proposed for the tower, and staff, we just wanted to note for the applicant and for Planning Commission that in terms of when we have logos involved with signage, the ordinance does have a criteria that if you're going to be using cabinet signs for the logos, that you need to be subordinate or lesser than the, the words as part of the signage. So in terms of the two options, option A on the left and option B on the right, option A is one that would meet the ordinance, and that is the one that staff is recommending for this particular sign. Next slide. Just some more signage over the windows, very little window signage. Next slide. And this would be the freestanding sign that's currently out on the site, and they would just be putting their replacement sign for Banfield in each side. Next slide. The, there is an existing monument sign for Burger Jones, and it is proposed to be replaced with a new monument sign. And this is the, the, the type of signage. Everything meets the ordinance in terms of its size, area, location, those types of things, with the exception of the height. And we are recommending from a staff perspective that the height be modified so that the monument does not exceed six feet in height. And also, the ordinance does require now that at the base of monument sign are plantings provided, either in terms of perennials, short shrubs, those types of things, so we are recommending that that be done as well. Next slide. The P U D benefits for the subject site are that, again, the vet clinic hospital is permitted use in the underlying B-three zone, so it meets the intent of the district, and we think will be a good fit for the shopping center. The use will actually have earlier closing hours and will not have any outside dog runs, et cetera, so there will be lesser impact to the residential to the south. They are open seven A M. to seven P M., seven days a week, whereas the former Burger Jones and patio was open up until eleven P M., seven days per week. In addition, there is no sound equipment associated any longer with the patio, so no dining, alcohol service, those types of things, so again, lesser impact. One of the things that I wanted to just briefly discuss is that the parking requirement for Burger Jones was substantially higher than what is proposed here. I believe the parking for Burger Jones required a minimum of a hundred and fourteen stalls, and for this pet hospital use with the number of employees that they have will have thirteen stalls, so parking will be more than adequate on-site. And one of the things that staff has been recommending for the past couple of years, and this is due to an ordinance change that was recommended by Planning Commission and Council, is that we recommend that the P U D also be changed so that any of the uses in the B-three zoning district that are permitted or accessory, that those would be permitted uses within the P U D as well, and that would be incorporated into the actual P U D ordinance that is ultimately adopted by the council. There are no P U D deviations requested. Next slide. And there are seven recommendations we, staff is recommending approval. Basically, the items are fairly standard types of conditions. One is that the uses in the underlying B-three zoning districts can be used or operational within this P U D. The conditions of previously proved P U Ds still remain enforce and effect, except as modified by the application. They would need to obtain sign permits from the city prior to its installing exterior signs. They will also need to provide an updated comprehensive sign plan, and that's actually signed by the owner of the property, and that will need to be updated just to incorporate the signage that's part of this application. And the condition five is that the tenant pay exterior, if there are any areas that need repair or painting once the Burger Jones signs are removed, that that be done. Number six relates to the tower sign, and that option A of that corner projection elevation graphic is recommended for approval. Option B is not, as it does not meet the ordinance currently. And then number seven, that the monument sign that's proposed just be reduced to a maximum of six height, and then also include decorative shebrary and flowers at the base, and those are just to meet the minimum ordinance standards. With that, I can stand for questions.
Great, thank you, Ms. Gerles. Commissioners, any questions off the bat here? Commissioner Ward?
Yes, thank you. A great presentation. You said that, did you say that an upcoming revision to this ordinance would make basically render this type of approval unnecessary to go through the Planning Commission because it would just be included in the ordinance, and is that what you said?
Um, it's actually a little bit different. The city went through, I'm going to say about three or four years ago, and it was probably with Mr. Weber. We went through and updated the ordinance to try to improve the city's, I guess, ability to market ourselves and to make sure that we were not out regulating other cities, different types of cities. So one of the things that we did is we added a provision in the ordinance that allows for staff to recommend and the city council to approve through a planned unit development. You can approve the additional uses that are allowed in the underlying zoning district. So what happens there is that becomes part of the P. Time a P U D is approved, the city council needs to adopt an ordinance for that particular planned unit development. And what will happen then is for, in the future, for example, this type of amendment would not be required because the veterinary clinic hospital is a use that's already allowed in the underlying B-three district. So what we can do, according to the city attorney, is add, if we state that specifically within the P U D ordinance, then folks in the future, when they want to come in to do business in that particular P U D, will be able to operate any type of business that is permitted within the underlying B-three zone.
Thank you.
All right, I am not seeing any other questions at the moment from commissioners, and I will certainly cycle back. But at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing at six forty-eight P M. If there are any members of the public on the Zoom meeting who wish to speak, we would welcome you to do that now. If you want to, the moderator can unmute you, and if you are speaking, please state your name and address, and then your comments. If there's anyone on the telephone who wishes to speak, press star nine to indicate that you want to speak, and then star six to unmute yourself. I will wait just a little bit here to give anyone wanting to speak some time. Do you know that we have Aaron Vorasane from Colliers Architecture on the call, who I believe is involved with this project? Mr. Vorasane, do you want to address the commission at all? Not seeing or getting a response, so we'll, we'll let Aaron comment if he would like later on. At this point, I will close the public hearing at six forty-nine P M. and kick it back to commissioners for additional comments and questions for Ms. Gerles. And before, let's see here. Okay, it, it looks, Commissioner Roberts, I'm gonna put you on hold just for one second. It looks like we do have someone on the phone, and it might be, it might be Aaron, so let's see if we can't get him on here.
Good evening. Can, can everybody hear me?
Yes. Will you please state your name and address for the record, and then by all means, share with us what you would like?
Sure. My name is Aaron Vorasane, and my address is fourteen one one zero No Way Drive South, Minnetonka, Minnesota, five five three zero five. And I'm with Colliers Architecture out of Saint Louis Park, and we are the architectural group that works with Banfield Pet Hospital across the country. And I'm attending here, if you guys have, if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them on behalf of Banfield. It's, you know, anything as far as operations of the hospital, or any questions that the commission may have.
All right, thank you very much. We'll, we'll keep you there just in case we do have questions for you. At this point, I'll keep the public hearing closed unless we see that there are others that want to address the commission. But we might use you as a, as a resource with our questions here. Let's go back to Commissioner Roberts.
Thank you. I guess my question could be towards the applicant who's on the line. Have you ever had any pushback from neighbors in a mall area like this in regards to putting in a, a veterinary clinic?
We, we have not, so what, what we do in these, in these existing spaces where we have adjacent tenants is we actually come back with another tenant demising while up against the existing one, and that helps mitigate any sound transmission between the spaces, especially, you know, noise, you know, dogs barking is, tends to be kind of like the main question that's asked on staff for a lot of these projects when we go in and we're not a permitted use. So to alleviate that, we build a full-height metal stud to the underside of the deck, fully insulated, and then we come back with a special acoustical drywall. It's called a soundbreak X P. So that really helps with any mitigation, noise transfer, any of, any of that like. So we've, we've been doing these hospitals all over the country, and we've never had an issue with disturbing adjacent neighboring tenants due to any sort of noise from pets.
Okay, that answers that. That was exactly what I was asking for, just to kind of touch all bases here to make sure that we cover everything, so thank you for answering that.
You're welcome.
I, I guess I have a couple of questions, and maybe Ms. Gerles can answer these. If not, we can go back to Mr. Verisim. One of the questions is that presumably some of these animals will have to relieve themselves. Where is that happening? And is there some, I guess, commitment on the applicants to make sure that those areas are being, I guess, monitored on a daily basis?
Yes, thank you, councillor, commissioners. The applicant did provide a waste management plan. They're very specific in that, and they keep, uh, employees are responsible for monitoring both the outside and, you know, inside of the facility. And they, all of the staff would be, you know, picking up if there are any, if there is anything. They have stations with pet stations, one on the outside that has the baggies available and, and disposal option there, and then also on the inside of the building, and perhaps, perhaps Aaron would like to discuss that a little bit further, but we're very satisfied with their proposal and their plan.
Yeah, I, I could stick a little bit to, to the pet waste. So as Deb was saying, we do provide, Banfield does provide an outdoor pet waste station, which is real similar to what you might see like in a park or even a, a dog park itself. And we will usually place that either at the parking island or somewhere near the front door, and that's monitored by the staff at least twice daily. And then any excess waste outside of that is, you see, picked up and disposed of. And then on the inside, they have an indoor pet waste cleanup section that they will use. You know, we have cleaning supplies there and paper towels and low-waste receptacles. So they, Banfield does a pretty good job saying on top of any pet waste, because that, that is probably next to the sound issue that the pet waste is usually the second most common question that's asked. So we've really done a thorough draw, trying to identify that and summarize kind of what that management plan looks like.
Uh, thank you for touching on that. I know that was in the background information. And I think along with Commissioner Roberts' question, those are the, a, as you said, those are the two things that really, you know, I think people need some assurance on with this type of application here. Commissioner John?
Thank you, Chair. I, my question is more along the lines of enforcement on, and I don't know, is the city responsible for enforcement for the Banfield to be cleaning up their mess, or is that more of the private business or centers duties? I guess I'm asking, yeah.
Ms. Gerles?
Um, the city, generally, we can go in if there are complaints and cite if that's needed. Banfield is operating already in the city. They're operating over on the east side of thirty-five and another shopping center there, and I did check there have been no complaints or no issues related to Banfield for that center in the years that they've operated there.
Thank you. And I, I guess just to clarify, what types of animals will be seen at the pet hospital? Are we going to see horses or?
Nope, nope. Most of the pets that are seen there are dogs and, and felines, so cats, dogs and cats.
So small house animals?
Correct.
All right, I am not seeing other questions, but I want to give the commissioners an opportunity to ask them or make a motion. Before we do that, I, I just want to say I think that this is a very nice fit for the, the retail center. I know a lot of, a lot of vacancies can sit for quite some time, so I'm glad that this is, is coming in here pretty quickly after the closing of Burger Jones, and I do hope, Aaron, that if you find any cheese curds stored away on the property, that you let us know, because that's one thing I'm missing with the closing of Burger Jones. Commissioner Ward?
Uh, thank you, yeah. Excellent, excellent presentation and, and a nice project. I think it's pretty well thought through and a great use for the space, so it's nice to see that fill up. So having said that, I move that we recommend to the city council approval of the P U D amendment to add veterinary clinic slash hospital as an allowed use, subject to the seven conditions that, that were listed.
Thank you, Commissioner Ward, and Commissioner John?
I agree with the other commissioners. I think the-
I agree with the other commissioners. I think this is, if Burger Jones has to leave with their cheese curds, this is a good filler, I guess. With that, I will second Commissioner Wad's motion.
Thank you. Moved by Commissioner Wad, seconded by Commissioner John, and if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Anderson.
Hi.
Commissioner Awad.
Hi.
Commissioner John.
Hi.
Commissioner Roberts.
Hi.
Commissioner Temmerman.
Hi.
And the motion carries. This item will move to the next city council meeting for final approval. And Ms. Girls, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that will be next Tuesday, April eighteenth, no.
Twenty.
Twenty.
Yep, the meeting starts at five thirty P M.
All right, thank you. With that, we'll move on to the next next agenda item, which is an application of the city of Burnsville for a comprehensive plan amendment to the future, excuse me, to the future land use guide plan to change the land use designation of a number of properties across the city of Burnsville from business retail office and high density residential to mixed use or heart of the city. Thank you for not listing out all of the properties and making me read those, and I will pass this on to Ms. Madden for probably going through some of those individually. So Ms. Madden, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, Planning Commission. As Chair Timmerman said, the item before you this evening is to consider quite a few properties for a land use guide plan change in our comprehensive plan. About forty properties in total are under consideration this evening. The majority are changing from high density residential or business retail office to mixed use. However, three properties are proposed to be changed from the business retail office to heart of the city. And those are part of what is associated with the former transit oriented development rezoning for an expansion of that area based on the new transit stations that are coming in. So next slide, please. And so just to kind of give you a recap on the timeline associated with these changes. At the, actually, it kind of goes back before this to a previous city council meeting where it came up as a brief discussion item at the end of what is mixed use and what are integrated uses in a building and what that led to was the January fourteenth, twenty twenty work session where staff was to bring forward areas to consider changing to mixed use to the city council for them to review. And most of those sites that were proposed at that meeting are what is seen in the changes before you this evening. So earlier this year, I presented an overview just of the topic to the planning commission so that everyone knew that this was something that had been going on behind the scenes the past year. Throughout twenty twenty, staff identified some additional areas where mixed use may be compatible. We began preparing maps and we shared with internal staff, but mainly we were kind of initiated some discussions with metropolitan council staff to talk about what our city council was interested in, what processes we as a city staff needed to go through to make this work and to bring forth something this comprehensive as an amendment. So starting off this year, we really got the ball rolling with this topic and sent out notification to all of our peer cities and jurisdictions, including the watershed districts, school districts, about these changes and the number of properties that were involved, giving some overall acreage. When we first sent out that information to our peer jurisdictions, there was about ninety acres of areas that were proposed to be changed, and those numbers have only shifted slightly since then. Part of that was because as staff prepared for a virtual meeting on March twenty fourth, and there were a number of calls from some of the town home developments that were kind of looped in to the changes just because of their location near major intersections or near other high density residential and some aging commercial centers. So there are actually two town home P U Ds that were omitted from the final public notice and this action this evening, based on those calls, they were established owner, individually owned town home associations in a planned unit development, two separate developments, and we got calls from residents of both and staff made the decision to omit those from the changes this evening. So the virtual meeting withheld. While we did not actually have any attendees at the Zoom meeting, I took several calls from both residential property owners, some of the commercial property owners, mainly just kind of questioning what the changes were. A few people asking if they were similar to the transit oriented development changes, which they were, a few people asking what types of uses may be allowed in mixed use if they wanted to build a second building on their property, things like that. So we were, we were getting some interest in the changes as an overall. But the only thing that really sparked staff to make some changes were the town home developments. So now we get to this evening, April twelfth, for a public hearing on the proposed changes. If recommending approval by the commission, this would go to the April twentieth city council meeting. Later on in the spring and after city council has adopted a resolution for the conference of plan amendment, staff will work to put together the packet of information for the metropolitan council for their formal review of the conference of plan amendment. A final resolution after their approval would go back to the city council and then later this year, the planning commission would again see some rezoning hearings scheduled on these properties once the comprehensive plan amendment is finalized. I do want to note that because the transit oriented development district was created through a consultant process last year and that rezoning was already done, that rezoning was conditioned on approval by the metropolitan council. So the properties that were rezoned to transit oriented development last fall will not need any further action once the metropolitan council has has approved these comp plan changes. So the number of properties that will be seen at the time of the rezoning will be a shorter list. Next slide, please. And so in general, with these changes, there's about six geographic areas to be considered. And as I just mentioned, properties within heart of the city and west of thirty five W are one of those general areas. But additionally, just some major intersections, which I'll go over on the next slide when I show the map that was included in your background report. This all came about based on and site selection for these areas came about based on best practices, practices by the American Planning Association and other groups to show that mixed zoning as a land use practice is cleared or recommended in areas that are in proximity to high level transit service, multimodal transportation opportunities. The goal of these types of walkable neighborhoods are these healthy communities, environmentally sustainable construction standards and that kind of pedestrian oriented mixed use neighborhood. And there are fiscal benefits from a land use perspective and from a local government perspective to enhance the value of those neighborhood centers. So that was a big draw at the city council level of the conversation. But generally, you know, a mixed use development as we see in the existing ones in Burnsville and in our peer cities in the metro. And they include housing of varying scales, price type blended in with that land use of retail job centers as well as high amenity, public spaces and buildings. Next slide, please. And so to quickly go over the changes that are proposed in a nice visual here for you. What started out as about ninety or so acres was reduced to about eighty seven acres, eighty eight acres, so not too much of a change. Some of that math that was removed by the town home association was added back at the intersection of Highway thirteen and Nicolet. There was one parcel that wasn't pulled in the initial map. Because my mapping services picked it up this right away, so that's why my math was a little off there. But in general, the majority of the acreage that's changing is from that business retail office. But still a bulk of those high density residential town, not townhomes, apartment buildings and multifamily properties within the city. So if I start on the right and the east part of our screen here, Cliff and River Hills is one of the areas that's proposed to be reguided this evening. That contains just over eleven acres of high density residential guided properties and just over four acres of the business retail office guided properties proposed to be reguided to mixed use. Moving to the west, I'll start at the top, the Highway thirteen and Nicolet that I just mentioned. One of the key reasons why this area was targeted is it is across the street in two directions from the existing park and ride and B T A station as well as the future Orange Line Transit Station. So that is why this key area was included. Initially, when the city council was making some recommendations, they were really interested in this area as well as some of the business and industrial areas to the east of the properties that are targeted. And DAP did omit from the initial review those kind of business and industrial properties because they are in a industrial office warehouse P U D. While they are base zoning as a E three general business, and those properties have light manufacturing uses in them, and that's why they were not included in this initiative. Moving south, there are the three heart of the city properties that are proposed to be reguided currently zoned transit oriented development. Further west from them is the large area that was incorporated into transit oriented development as part of these new changes with that regulating plan. Those are the properties that will not be back before you for rezoning measure later this year because that was already taken care of. Moving to the southwest, a key area of focus is County Road five and Burnsville Parkway. This is just north of the existing mixed use area for Valley Ridge, which has been a very successful mixed use plan unit development location. And so the proposal is a number of majority business retail office parcels and then some small development of multifamily residential. And that is the location where the two town home developments were omitted. So and part of the acres that was included in that was actually a city owned stormwater holding pond parcel that is part of the planning development and is an outlot of one of those planning developments. So that is also proposed to remain with no changes. And then right in the bottom center of your screen is the Nicolet Avenue and McAndrews intersection. That location is also surrounded to the north and the west by mixed use. And so the properties there have some office were proposed to be reguided to mixed use as well to fit in with that node and that neighborhood center. Next slide, please. So staff is recommending approval to this, that the planning commissioner recommend approval to this future land use guide plan amendment. As I mentioned, next steps would be city council and then later a preparation for the metropolitan council portion of this conference of plan amendment review. So this is a public hearing this evening and I can stand for questions. I know that that was a lot of information. I am available. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Madden. Commissioners, any thoughts or questions off the bat here? Commissioner John.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I was just curious on, you said that transit oriented district hasn't had approval from the Met Council as of yet. Is that all going to be one big package when it goes over to the Met Council? Is that why it hasn't been approved or is that just the normal, when a time of things on a type of ordeal?
Yes, at the time that the zoning change went through, no action was included for the comprehensive plan amendment because this comprehensive plan amendment was already being prepared on the staff end. It did occur later into the spring than the original intention was, just due to circumstances with our department. So but so it is one just large packet of these forty or so parcels that's going to be prepared and sent off to the metropolitan council with a resolution from our city council.
If I may add, Sarah, a majority of the properties that were rezoned from heart of the city, one and two to transit oriented development, no land use changes required for those. It's already in place. It's already said. It's just for those parcels mainly on the west side of thirty five W.
Yeah, that's correct.
I have a few questions, but I think I'm going to open the public hearing. I don't know that we have attended these, but at this time I will open the public hearing at seven fourteen P M. If there's anybody who does want to speak to this item. This is your opportunity and I'm not seeing anyone, so I will close the public hearing at seven fourteen P M. and kick it back to the commissioners for additional questions. I will ask a few specifically about some of the areas in general. Starting with the intersection of Nicolet and McAndrews. Can you, just in a little bit finer detail, help me identify what is currently designated mixed zoning? I guess on the north side of McAndrews. I know we've done some work over west of Nicolet with the Aloha Monkey and the Colonial Ridge area. But do you have an image that we could see maybe?
I don't know that I can share the images that I put up on the website, which actually did show a before and after for that area. But if we could get my just blue map back up, please, thank you. Generally, and I can't point to let you know, but at that Nicolet Avenue and McAndrews intersection, the Colonial, I think that's what it's called Colonial Ridge Shopping Center north of it is the Aloha Monkey Tattoo. Those are mixed use. They were reguided to mixed use as part of the twenty forty update. So that was done after that update was approved by the Metropolitan Council in a swoop. And then north of the blue highlighted properties that are part of this change is a condo development and the entirety of that condo development is also zoned and guided mixed use. And that, I believe, was done possibly the twenty thirty comprehensive plan update, but possibly even before, but that was existing prior to the twenty forty update as a mixed use property.
Okay, thank you for that history. I didn't have any recollection of that particular property, which must have predated me or any of us for that matter. I guess just looking at this, my my primary concern is it seems this is the one that is closest to existing single family homes, especially the parcels to the, I guess, the easternmost edge of that. But I didn't realize that the condos that are currently there are already mixed use, so it seems to make sense that we would just make this entire corner mixed use. The other area that I had a question on was the Burnsville Parkway and County Road five area, which I think ten years from now could look quite a bit different than it does now. I think that could be a very good thing. It's already starting to see some changes with the new service station that's been added and the the apartment building that's going in now. But the question is, sorry, I'm talking and also trying to pull up a map. The question is the same thing. What around these areas is currently zoned mixed?
So around those current areas is that is mixed is just the Valley Ridge Quick Trip and then brand new apartment building that is under construction. Those are the three parcels that are a mixed use plan unit development.
So then basically, anything that is either lower medium density or currently has some type of business on here, it looks like will be mixed use then. So I just looking for consistencies and it looks like, you know, in this area we've grabbed everything, which which is good because it seems like it would be much easier to get them all done now than having to come. it seems like it would be much easier to get them all done now than having to come back and piece mill them as property owners kind of weigh their options with the new zoning designation. Those were my questions for now. Commissioners, any other questions or thoughts as you look at this? Commissioner John?
Yeah, I'm just looking at the map here. I was curious on the one up at Cliff River, Cliff River Hills there. That seems to be a little bit further. I guess in my mind, I'm trying to picture the area, but that's where the Donut Star is and there's a subway up in that area, correct?
That's correct. And the Bluffs of Burnsville apartment building development is there as well.
Okay, okay. What about the area off of Difley and thirteen? Was that discussed at all?
The, um, the area at Difley and thirteen is already mixed use as part of the twenty forty comprehensive plan update.
Oh, okay.
Those are the two or three parcels, I believe, are included in that retail center.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Not see any other questions or comments, so at this point I would entertain a motion for approval. I don't, I personally don't see any concerns with what Ms. Madden has presented tonight. I think it's a pretty exciting opportunity for some of these property owners and also for the city. I mean, as you said, that corner of Nicolet and McAndrews is a great example of some dated business spaces that could be updated. I think that the mixed use zoning could really benefit these neighborhoods and these areas, so I'm excited to see if there are some changes or movement going forward. And with that, I'll stop talking because I see hands and Commissioner Anderson.
I would like to make a motion that we recommend to the city council approval of the comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use guide plan as presented in this report and supplemental materials.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson and Commissioner John.
I will second Commissioner Anderson's motion.
Thank you. Moved by Commissioner Anderson, seconded by Commissioner John. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Awad.
Aye.
Commissioner John.
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts.
Aye.
Commissioner Timmerman.
Aye. And the motion carries. Great job, staff. Thank you very much. I know that's a lot of detailed work when you're looking at individual properties and neighboring property owners as well. So thank you so much for that work. That will bring us to item number five, which is the title ten and eleven city code update goals and objectives kickoff. And we have, I think I'll kick it over to Regina Dean to kind of introduce this and provide us a little bit of background. This is Dean. Nice to see you.
I was muted. Sorry about that. Thank you, Chair. Timmerman. So over the last year and a half, two years, the city council has, had mentioned that they wanted to do a full city code update. And so he had reached out to three consultants that are in our pool of consultants to see if there would be interest one in doing the zoning and subdivision sections of our city code as part of that update. And we did select WSB to oversee those two titles or those two sections of the city code. It, it's, it'll be a separate but parallel process with the overall larger city code update. But because of state statute and our city code, the Planning Commission is the body that oversees any of the zoning and land use type changes and subdivision ordinance. And so we've enlisted you as our planning commission to do a lot of the, of the work. Of course, Eric will talk about some public engagement opportunities and collaboration with other types of groups to seek feedback. And staff will also be doing a lot of that heavy lifting behind the scenes. But this will be about an eighteen month process, we believe. Could be twelve, could be two years. But we're kind of aiming around the eighteen month mark. And, and as we get into it, you know, we'll, I think we'll learn a lot. And, and Eric will be our lead kind of guiding us through the way, but we'll be alongside him. And, and you'll see a lot of us in the coming months. So with that, I'm going to kick it over to Eric. This is our kickoff meeting. He'll have an introduction. And then the real work will start and will be before you in, in June, but I'll let Eric take it away from here.
Thank you. Can we get the presentation up on the screen? Thank you, Chair and Planning Commission. Yes, I thought Regina did a good job introducing this, so can we go to the next slide? Tonight, I'm going to review five elements which you see on your screen. The comprehensive plan goals and policies, which we will continually revisit. It both will provide staff and myself as a consultant guidance on how to change some of the text. But also, we will look back at that if there's not a consensus on how to move forward. We may be able to come to a conclusion of, of, you know, which option most suits the comprehensive goals and policies. Related to that, we'll look at the residential zoning district densities and how they relate to the comprehensive plan. Third, we'll talk about the timeline and process that we're going to be involved. Fourth, we'll review the draft public engagement plan. And then finally, we'll look at the planning commission goals and themes. Before I move to the next slide, you know, you see three and four here are draft. We're looking for input from you tonight and also staff has only seen a draft this, so there might be some tweaks, but we really expect to change based on our conversation here tonight. So can we go to the next slide, please? So two of the big elements from the comprehensive plan are both the community vision, which I think is descriptive but fairly general. Probably not going to provide a lot of guidance when we get into the details of a zoning ordinance. But I think the shared value statements will be very helpful in, you know, what's the purpose of this ordinance? Do we want to make things simpler? Do we want to make them easier for residents? And like, looking at our shared value statements should be helpful in guiding this effort. Next slide, please. Couple items that are quite a bit larger, so links are provided. And as we move into different specific items, we'll go into them in more detail, but the city council strategic policy or priorities, the economics development strategic plan and the sustainability guide plan, we will be, you know, looking back to those issues and policies to see how they provide us guidance in how to change both the zoning and subdivision. Next slide, please. So our first step into the comprehensive plan is looking at the densities of the residential land uses. So you see the two columns farthest to the left are the comprehensive land use plan and it's listed by category. And then what is the density range? The three columns to the right are those current residential zoning ordinance. And so we have it listed out by zoning district. And then minimum lot area. This is rewritten a little bit from the way the code is written often, particularly for R two and above. It will say a minimum lot size and then plus so much per unit. The math works out that you know, it's, it's the same amount per unit. So that makes it pretty easy to do the density, which is the third column. The two I'll point out here is the planning unit development. And currently, they allow a twenty percent density increase if you do a planned unit development, so that results in a little larger density. Could you go to the next slide, please? So the first initial take is that the R three A and the R three D, which are the two zoning districts that correspond with the medium density residential, they would not achieve the full density range. So you see medium density residential is from four to eighteen units an acre. And with the R three D mobile home park, you get up to twelve, but not all the way to eighteen. But what is probably more likely the zoning district that'd be used in medium density? That is the R three A. You're not even getting halfway through that range at eight point seven units an acre. And then as we move to the HDR, the high density residential, you see that range is from eight to thirty units an acre. And the R three B, kind of the straight zoning for high density residential, would only get up to fourteen point five units per acre. If you have the PUD, that's a twenty percent bonus, but that still is only seventeen point four units an acre. So if we go to the next slide, please. We have to talk about in future meetings, but probably we'll start in our next meeting. How are we going to resolve that? So could we click it once? One way to do it would be we could decrease the minimum lot areas, so that way R three A and R three B could achieve the full density range. Could you click it one more time? You could modify the PUD to allow a greater density. And then one final click. Or we could end up creating new zoning districts. So this is just introducing kind of what we're going to be looking at. This was the simplest one to kind of describe, but as we go forward with the commercial and mixed use districts, we'll be doing a very similar exercise of looking at the comprehensive plan. What kind of development is comprehensive plan calling for? And does your code allow you to implement those, those goals? Next slide, please. So for the draft project timeline and process, as Ms. King said, we're probably in about the eighteen month guideline. But we're looking at ten planning commission meetings, four city council meetings and six public engagement activities. I laid out this initial schedule, which I think is a little aggressive, but you know, is a place to start. And then as we get into discussion, need more time, we can expand from it. Next slide, please. So here's the layout of the ten different meetings, and I'm not going to go through every one of these, but we're at meeting number one, where we're discussing these five items. As I kind of introduced, meeting number two, which is tentatively in June, we would have the first review of the residential districts. And then meeting number three, we would have a first review of the business and industrial districts. But we'd then have the second review of the residential. And then the final one, I'll go one by one of meeting number four, you see there is the public hearing for the residential zoning district. And then you see second review, first review. So the idea is we're not going to wait for the entire code all the way through. As we determine changes that are suitable for the residential districts, our plan would be to adopt it after we come to a consensus. What was in your packet but not here is checking in with the city council before we conduct the public hearing. But after the planning commission has done their heavy lifting and provided some strong recommendations. And then the other thing I note is starting at meeting eight and meeting nine, there, there's a number of other issues that don't fit well into the, you know, types of residential or business zones. But when we're talking about generally residential zones, we will be reviewing signs that are allowed in residential zones, parking that's allowed in residential zones, landscaping requirements, building material requirements. So we'll, you know, we'll kind of be looking at it like a developer or like a resident that if they're looking to do a residential development, what's all the code sections that you're going to need to look at and observe to do a residential development. So hopefully that will help us, you know, look at it as, as a customer and try to come up with ways to make the document easier to use. Next slide, please. So the public engagement plan includes a number of things. Project website, which WSB will put the website together so that way we can upload information as comes along, but it will be linked to on the city website and then will be where we'll send people if we do social media blasts and the like. Could you do one click, please? So there's two online engagements included in this plan. They could be things like WikiMap or Social Pinpoint where there's essentially a map of the city and people can indicate where there's issues or where there's concerns, where other items might be better through a written survey that you can complete. So later in this meeting or later in this presentation, we'll talk about what might be some topics that would be useful. Could you click one more time, please? The second element would be a developer's roundtable. And there we'll try to involve the EDA and other agencies that may happen. As with any meeting, it would be a public meeting, but that one's meant to be more one time conversation, not meant to be quite like the other public engagement. One more click, please. And then we'll have three pop up engagement activities. And if we can go to the next slide, what we found with these pop up engagement is trying to get people to attend if the only event is to talk about something like the zoning code. That's, that's usually not a very successful event. So we found that if we try to do the pop up engagement during another city event, we get a lot better attendance. Some people that might not have otherwise reached out. So we're going to list here a couple of the activities we're looking at. We may choose the activities for where it falls in the calendar. We may choose the activities by the type of audience we expect. But some of the activities would be party on the plaza. And then could you actually click probably four more clicks? Thank you. There you go. So you see the Friday Night Boogie art and all that jazz. The Firemuster, Gap Yower. We'll look at the different events and, and what seems to make sense as well as as we move along, what issues come up and, or what questions you may have and try to find the right event to manage with. Can we go to the next slide, please? So these next two slides are some questions that I'm going to ask you. So Chair, I don't know how you'd like to go about this, but you know, this I want to be more interactive, but I could certainly go through my next two slides and we can come back. Or do you want to go over these one by?
Why don't you go through the slides and then we'll come back and just kind of open it up for a open discussion?
Certainly. So this slide here, I like this, these questions at the beginning of any long term planning project, be it a comprehensive plan update, be it a smaller area plan or be it the updates like this. But the first question is, what must happen during this process to make this project successful? Could you click once, please? The second question is kind of the opposite, but is often much more telling. If something occurred during this process, you know, what could happen that would prevent this project from being successful? One more click, please. Then finally, the third is who must be involved or heard from for this project to actually be successful? So we'll come back to these questions in a second. Can we go to the next slide, please? So then finally, we, we intend to start our first public online engagement soon. And I would like to hear from the planning commission on, is there any recent topics or group of topics that you've heard that you would like people, that you know, people's input from? And then we would work, if you could click once, please. We will work with staff to determine is a mapping activity maybe the best way to garner that input or is a survey? Or is a survey a better way? So if you could go back two slides, please, that would be great. Yes. Why don't we stop there? So Chair, I'll turn it over to you to direct conversation.
All right. Thank you. I guess.
We could certainly, I'm sorry. We could take questions on the entire presentation and the process first and come back to these questions at the last? Or however you want to do it.
I think what I'd like to do if the commissioners are open to it is just taking ourselves off of mute and trying to see if we can have a digital dialogue here. I think that the, the questions you outlined are, are beaten, should kind of lead us into some answers you're looking for. So, I mean, just like we, as if we were in the council chambers, feel free to speak. And let's try to answer these questions for Eric so we can get started.
I go first. I, the, the question number one that's asked about making this successful, I would, one of the things I would say is, try to keep it from not being so overwhelming right away. And there's a lot of stuff going on and there's a lot of things that most people don't understand how it works, but they're very interested. So I know it's a vague answer or question, whatever you want to call that. But in regards to just keeping everything as simplistic and communication open, I think that's going to help as we take the steps to, to make this happen. It's exciting that it's actually happening. I like that we're, we're not sitting back in the past. We're actually moving forward and changing some of this stuff. And it, you know, Burnsville is going to be bigger and better because of this. So I'm, I'm excited for what's going to happen. Thank you.
Yeah, I would have to agree with Commissioner Roberts. I think one of the biggest things to make this more successful is how much input we get from the public. And one of the things that I've always, always wondered and always thinking, and this goes from the other people on this commission to the city council or the public in general. What is our goals as a city? Are we looking to expand our population to be one of the top 10 cities population wise in the state? Are we trying to stay where we're at? Are we looking for more amenities within the city? Those kinds of questions are always the ones that are coming to my mind. And I hope that this, this whole process will bring that out. So we, we do have an idea of where we need to go as a city. What, that would be our guide. I think that would, if we could get that, I think we'd be doing really well.
One of the things that for question number one, anyway, I think it is really important to make sure we're getting a, a good cross section of property owners, but also property users. We hear a lot from developers. We hear a lot from folks who own commercial property, but we don't necessarily hear from the tenants. And the same is true. We hear from single family homeowners, but we don't hear from folks who rent single family homes. We don't hear from folks who, you know, maybe are in an apartment with, you know, a hundred other folks. And if we can really get our citizens engaged beyond just property owners, I think that would be ideal. And to piggyback on Commissioner John a little bit too, I would, well, I kind of lost my train of thought here. If anybody else wants to jump in, I'm going to try to refocus it.
Maybe I'll jump in similar theme. I think it's going to be, you know, as we're a diverse city, I think it's important that we get the input of kind of the full range of the people that live in the city. It's kind of similar to what, maybe I'm restating what Commissioner John said, but just making sure that we get, get, like I say, that diverse range of input that reflects our diverse community.
Well, and what's happening right now, I've had people come up to me knowing that I'm on this commission and they're making comments in regards to, wow, there's buildings going up all over the place. And these are some pretty substantial buildings, especially in the, the triangle we have on 35 and stuff like that. And all of a sudden, within a few months, there's another building up or there's something coming in. And it's exciting, but the average person out there in Burnsville doesn't watch this show or this, the, all this telecast, they don't, they don't pay that much attention. So for us to be a little bit more, I guess, I'm open on how we get the information out. We might get more questions. We might get more people responding that way. Most of the people are probably going to just go sit back and see what happens. But I'm sure there's a lot of people out there who are very interested. And I would love to see us be as transparent on this as possible. And I know some things can't be because it's underlying, but the developer round table, that sounds exciting too, to get those guys together and find out what their needs are. I like the fact that we're, we're coming into the 2021 era and Burnsville, you know, is ready for a big boom right now.
And to jump on that, I really like how the, this plan of trying to bring people out doing different events. I think that's a really good idea because I think that is going to pull people out. And we can, we can interview them. We could get their, get their feelings on things. I really, I really like that plan.
Yeah, one of the opportunities, you know, we're sorry for jumping in, you know.
Go ahead, Eric.
We're, you know, we're learning as we all have here in COVID and things. And, and some of this technology listed before, you know, existed before this, but people know how to use it more. You know, the, the Friday night boogie or the, the movie in the park, you know, we have the ability to do a mentee meter where we could put a survey on the screen and have people log in through their, their cell phones and enter information. So it's, it's quite powerful, the way you can reach people, which should be both, you know, and again, sorry, COVID related, but getting down and shaking people's hands and having a one on one conversation. But there's also ways to have input, you know, from a larger group that's gathered. We, we aim to do both.
Couple of things that I've been thinking and the thought that I had lost before, and, and that is make sure that we are coordinating with the task force. Because it's quite possible that, as I think Commissioner John was getting at, they might be looking for feedback. They might be at these events. They might be doing a lot of these same types of information seeking activities. And I think it could become very, I guess, noisy for, for people where it's easy just to, to kind of turn down the volume and not pay attention. I, I would hate to really have any duplication of efforts. And so I guess my question to you or maybe to Ms. Dean is what, what kind of, I guess liaison do we have between what the planning commission is doing and what the, the task force will be doing?
Well, I can start. You know, one of the big items will be those four city council check ins. You know, the, the city council will be leading the effort of all the other sections of the ordinance. So, so having those check ins. The other one would be even to come up with all these events. We've, we've tapped into the city's communication staff. And I imagine that the task force is going to be doing something very similar. And hopefully by kind of using both the staff, the same staff, we'd get some help. I remember when we had the conversation with the communication staff, they, they were struggling. Why there are going to be these two different groups? But, you know, legally with state statute saying zoning and subdivision is, is the planning commission's purview and how strict that is, there's, there's a lot of sense in that. But hopefully through having particularly the communication staff working with both groups, they could, you know, help us with that feedback loop of what is one group doing that may help the other group. But with that, Ms. Dean, do you have anything you want to add?
Yeah. So the whole city code effort, it will be led by city manager Melanie Mescoli and our city attorney Joel Jamnik. But there will be staff involved with each section and kind of acting as a liaisons topic specific. So there, there will be some crossover where, you know, I'll be heavily involved with the planning commission topics. But then I'm thinking of like special events that crosses so many different departments and areas of the city where it's right now housed under title three. And you're looking at title 10, but there's the crossover. So I would be that conduit kind of taking things back and forth. And then there's other areas where it's, has to do with like the watershed district. And our engineering department will be liaison kind of for that stuff. And, and telecommunications where we might have some things in the, the, again, other titles that the full city code area is looking at. But then our IT staff and our engineering staff and planning staff will be the go betweens back and forth. So yeah, there is going to be a lot of crossover. I can see that. And we'll, we'll do a lot with that interaction and kind of carrying back and carrying the message back and forth.
You know, as you were kind of talking about that Eric and Regina, the task force might be, to answer your number three here, that might be a great group to actually come in and, and to help brainstorm some, some thoughts with us. I know that they're going to be carrying a heavy load on their own, but you know, those are going to be folks who are engaged enough with living in the community that they might have some thoughts. They might have, you know, wanted to plant a some type of landscaping that wasn't currently allowed under city code. I, I just feel like maybe getting some ideas from that group in a brief session would be nice. The other thing that I would really like to see in addition to the different events where you'll be seeking feedback, it'd be nice to bring some of those people that provide feedback into the planning commission. I mean, obviously it's voluntary if they want to. But it's, it's really nice to hear those anecdotal stories of what has somebody had to do to go up against the city to get their larger garage that the, you know, the zoning ordinances may not have allowed? Or, you know, what is really affecting that person? And I think that, you know, we get all of that information, like tonight was a great example. We had the information from citizens providing feedback on the mixed zoning changes. But it's not the same as having somebody come in and just have a dialogue about their story, how it affects them or has affected them.
Good feedback. Regarding question number two, you know, it's, it's a lot like question one. It's, it's the flip side, but sometimes just asking, you know, what could happen? You know, luckily in this last year, a lot has happened. We still figured out how to do business, but you know, is there anything that, that, you know, you're aware of that we should be cautious about? And you know, that might be schedule related, that might be a big development coming up that, you know, may take some of your time, anything like that. Cause that, that could simply be, you know, kind of, we all know this, this takes time mentally. And when your agenda is really large, you can't always dedicate the time mentally that you need to, to make some of these tough decisions. So if you have any input there, that would be great.
Fortunately, Ms. Garrison, Ms. Madden, and I'm sure along with Ms. Dean advocated for us and themselves to make this kind of our only focus for the next year, which is good. Obviously we'll have projects come along. Ms. Madden, Ms. Girls, do you know of anything that will really be stretching your time and, and ours as far as projects or developments?
Maybe I can take that. So as we get into this, we'll do our best to try to stack the development projects onto one meeting and then hopefully have this free or just city codes or zoning code and subdivision review. Doesn't always work out the best based off of developers timelines and their urgencies. But we can try to kind of maybe rework our developments, the middle schedule and that flow to put that out front, to make that kind of clear that they were, this is a priority of the city. This is going to be an 18 month process. Here's the revised development schedule, you know, from this point forward or from, you know, June forward or whatever that date may be. And that's something that we haven't really discussed internally as a staff, but that's something that we could do. I think we may have tried that during the comprehensive plan update. Probably some months we're more successful than others, but that's something, a tool we can try to do. But there are projects on the horizon that we are aware of. We do anticipate a handful of submittals in the next, well, probably two days, day or two, two days. And those will be some pretty significant projects.
Always exciting to hear. Any other thoughts on number two, things that could prevent the project from being successful?
Well, from a staff perspective, I think it's critical that the city council is on board with what we do. And also to be somewhat consider election cycles to try to make sure that we're, you know, we're not doing this. And then, you know, the council decides, you know, there are different council members that come on board and they don't know anything about it. Or it would be, I think, helpful to get some direction from the city council as to what their thoughts are. But that's just my two cents. I think it could derail things. So better earlier than later, I guess.
Well, Deb, I always appreciate your candor. I, I think that's a great point. I think that maybe it would be good to have council member Schultz come early on here, maybe to our next meeting where we're, where we're discussing this. We can collectively ask some of those questions, get some of that guidance and direction. I, I mean, I get the sense that some of that's still being worked out, which is, yeah, it makes me nervous too. It's, it, I don't want to feel like we're doing this on the fly without much direction. You know, really, what is the purpose? Is the purpose to make the lives of citizens easier, to make the tape less red? To, you know, is that the main focus here? Is the main focus to, as Commissioner John said, to do everything we can to help, you know, build the city up as far as population and opportunities? It might be good to, to really ask those questions. So commissioners, do you think we should, at this point, now that we've kind of jumped in, get council member Schultz to come into a meeting?
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. Find out if she could bring in with the other council members and the mayor field about what their priorities are for the city. So we can, we could have that dialogue. It's a great idea.
I don't know how, that's cool about doing that, Ms. Girls, Ms. Madden, is that something you could set up for us to get her on to? I, I don't know if our next meeting will be discussing this or if it will be discussing development projects. But is there a way we can get her on the schedule for the next time we are jumping into this?
Yeah, from a staff perspective, we can talk with, with her and see what her schedule is and have her, you know, come in. Yeah, from a staff perspective, we can talk with with her and see what her schedule is and have her, you know, come in sooner than later. And she's the liaison to the planning commission, so. She's familiar with what's happening at the council level, so I think that would be a really good opportunity to do that.
All right. Let's maybe go to the next slide and just see if we can give you any additional information or thoughts.
So I'm just looking for what, you know, were there recent developments that? You know, were difficult because of the code? Were you getting requests for a lot of variances lately? Another example might be are are people trying to do plan unit developments because they they can't make the kind of standard zoning work? You know, in your eyes, what what are the, what are the issues that, you know, you may be facing on a, on a, you know. Meeting by meeting basis that. You would like us to dive a little deeper into.
I do feel like some of the planned unit developments we see. Are fairly minor, I mean, a a small portion of them. That. I look at it on the background pack and it's like. I know there's going to be no dialogue. I know there's probably going to be no community input. It's just, it's kind of like. Going through the process. And those are the types of things that I think we try to look for. You know, delegating to staff approval. I unfortunately, at the moment, I can't think of an example, but there's, there's been a handful of them. The only. You know. Code related issue that we've seen in the last year was where a citizen. Built an oversized garage after being directed by ordinance and staff direction and. City council direction to not do so. They did so anyway. And. The city council and the planning commission and the staff and the code did not necessarily align with. The end result on that. So I think. More so than anything. I guess the. I don't know, the assurance that once we. Get city council approval on what we've done. That the city council will, you know, abide by what they've approved. Go into the code updates. Commissioner John, come on, help me out here.
I was I was trying to, I was trying to think of something. The the best I can think of is, for the most part, we don't get a lot of. Issues come up where somebody, somebody is, you know, running into a brick wall and. It it's really minor when we're looking at. At, you know. Variances or anything of those lines. It really hasn't been anything heavy. We've had a few meetings where we get public input. I always hope for more public input, but it doesn't, and you know, I. Say that now, but. Sometimes it it gets a little bit hairy, however. I I really think, and and again. If this was not to be successful, it would all be within not hearing from people. I really hope people realize this is where they live and this is the city trying to reach out to them. And and see what they think and what they feel. And to sit around afterwards and start complaining about, oh, we're not doing anything as a city. Well. It it all comes down to this. I really think. You know, with a. I would be interested to find out how much more we could do as a city to help people out. And well, I'm very open to, go ahead, Mr. Roberts.
Yeah, I. I gotta throw this back on our staff. Because, I mean, our staff is the filter that basically answers a ton of questions for people when things come in. By the time it even gets to us, it's so cleaned up. You know, and there's so many answers that are already given to people who are are calling in to do things. That, I mean, we don't have as many. Issues as what people might think. I mean, the stuff that comes to us is pretty clean cut. Again, staff, that's for you guys. That's doing a great job. So I think people find that that reflects on what's being done in the city. And we don't get a lot of complaints because everything is done by the book and. With this kind of changing some of the rules and some of the things that are going to go forward. The input from the public is going to be big, but I do, I have to say, I think there's a lot of trust in the Burnsville public. Of how the staff and how everybody is is doing their job. So hats off to those guys. But yeah, in regards to the issues that we have, I, aside from the stuff that you guys are thinking about as well, we don't have a lot. So the public involvement is probably going to be good. Whether or not we get a ton of it, I don't know. People might sit back and just say, keep doing a good job, guys. You know, we trust you. How's that?
One of the. One of the bigger issues when we've had, you know, lots of folks come in on projects. Relates to. I think the land use and transportation. You know, a lot of folks have issues with traffic, you know, through their neighborhoods and how that's going to be impacted by a new development. And I don't know if there's an opportunity through this to take a look at. You know, are there other street calming types of things that can be done or? You know, just things to address, I guess, increased. Vehicles. Due to especially some of the larger apartment projects and those types of things. Those seem to be the hot. Button items that that I can recall.
Yeah, great point and. You know, as the county is looking at County Road forty-two from. East to west, west to east, you know, across the entire county. I do know Eric that we might want to. Talk with them a little or at least understand what they're looking at because. I know on the, in some of the early discussions, there's been talk about. You know, ways to route traffic from forty-two onto McAndrews, onto South Cross. To lighten the load on County Road forty-two, which I think, you know, are all things we've talked about at the city level as well, but I think if the county is really taking. A lead on. Or changes to the actual infrastructure of County Road forty-two. What kind of support are we going to have? On those secondary roads that the city is responsible for and what kind of impact, as Ms. Gero said, will. Traffic have in neighborhoods as those changes occur. You know, I don't know where in our chapters ten and eleven, that discussion will come in, but. Really. I think the time is is good because the county is is really starting to take a look at County Road forty-two.
Yeah, you know. To kind of go at that first question there, the one thing I keep hearing over and over again. Keeps being brought up is the Center Village project that we're working on. What's going to happen with the mall? That sort of thing and and public engagement and that would be also very great. And we do have, we do have a plan that we laid out, however. I I think people want to see something happening and, you know, decently time, but.
Also, I haven't heard anything from Commissioner Anderson. Is he still up there?
Still there. He's on the clock tonight, so Commissioner Anderson, what do you got?
Sorry about that. My son just walked in the room to ask me a bunch of questions. It happens, it happens. Um, no, I mean. To me, the the most important thing would just be getting as much engagement as possible from. The people, I mean, we we. The whole goal of everything that we do is to help the city and help everybody else and. I I think that's the thing that I feel like I'm personally missing a little bit is just getting some of that insights. There's a lot of things that, you know, we've been working on, a lot of things that the city's been planning on doing. So I just, I would like to hear more of that overall.
I think these are all good conversations. Maybe what I'll do is I'll I'll just quickly go, what's the process between now and June and then I'll ask one more time. You know, brought up any new ideas, but. You know, it's going to take a little work to assemble all the various code sections into. You know, the broad categories like residential and and we got a good start. We're probably a week away from sharing that with staff. But we're going to have conversations not only with community development staff, but. Community development is going to help us bring in the other departments such as engineering or parks. You know, ED to to help understand, you know, what impediments or conflicts they're seeing. So that's, that's what we plan on doing between now and June, why we didn't have anything on the schedule. I think in those conversations, we'll take your feedback that you provided for us tonight and. Start talking about what could be a a good online activity to start. Coming up with some of those questions, maybe talk about other agencies that need to be involved. That may. You know, be a written update between now and June on kind of what we heard and and what our next steps are. But Ms. Dean, you have anything you want to add there?
Not a whole lot. Yeah, just excited to get going and and yeah, there will be a gap between this meeting and the next meeting, but like Deb had mentioned. I think if we can get councilmember Schultz and get some feedback from her based off of what her colleagues are saying. That way, you know, as you're going diving into this, you have a better understanding of kind of where the council sits. I do want to remind everybody, like Eric talked about in the beginning, that we have our our kind of guiding documents and policies that are in place right now, like the. Comprehensive plan, the sustainability plan, our economic development strategic plan, which the council has recently adopted and so. I think we'll be leaning on a lot of those already kind of recently approved documents. For for some guidance as well as we're looking at some of these individual chapters. And so, yeah, just excited to get started and and moving on this. It'll hopefully. You know, I think a big thing is let's try to simplify language where we can eliminate things that either aren't being used. Or are overly complex. And and get into that kind of plain language, but then also, how can we cut down on on things that are just taking staff time? Things that you don't see as a planning question, but what are things that staff is just spending a ton of time on that can be. Modified so that it's a a quick review and analysis, but still provides our. Our customers and our residents with a a nice standard and and good quality of life. So it's like. Want to find that balance between. Between a lot of things. And so, yeah, just excited to get started. We're ready.
So Chair, I don't know if anybody came up with any last items. If we can go to the next slide, if anybody does. You know, I think. You know, Deb and Sarah and Regina would be very helpful to. Bring those items up to, but there is my contact information and if you have any more comments or questions that come up, feel free to reach out.
Well, thank you very much. As far as a Zoom open dialogue goes, I think we did okay. I would. I I guess I would like to have some of these meetings more in like a. In-person roundtable, you know, kind of like the, the council's work session type of setup. If we can do that in a way where commission members are comfortable. I know that we talked about that a couple of weeks ago and. I think we came to a a general consensus that we'd be all right going back to hybrid and and maybe for these meetings, that's a a good place to start. Because I think being able to put something up on a whiteboard or to, you know, Eric will look at you across the table and. Really have a dialogue, I think that will make it a bit easier. So hopefully we can get there sooner than later.
Well, the vaccine rollout is happening, so hopefully we can get to hybrid sooner.
Yeah, absolutely. All right, anything else on this topic? All right, seeing none. Thank you, Regina and Eric, and we'll move to item number six on the agenda, which is updates. Are there any updates from commissioners or staff?
Yes, I just have a couple of quick updates in that the two public hearing items that were on this evening's agenda will be on the April twentieth. City council meeting at five thirty and that your next planning commission meeting is Monday, April twenty-sixth. At six thirty PM. And right now, it's looking like we're going to have three public hearings on that meeting date, but we will keep you posted and. Keep an eye on the development map and the posted agenda when it comes out.
Likely that meeting will be hybrid on that twenty-sixth, so you'll have the opportunity to attend in person or virtually still.
Great. All right, I don't see any other updates. So with that, I would like to request a call for adjournment for tonight's April twelfth, twenty twenty-one planning commission meeting. Commissioner Roberts.
I move that we adjourn for tonight's meeting.
Thank you. And Commissioner Anderson.
I second that.
Moved by Commissioner Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Anderson. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Anderson.
Hi.
Commissioner Awad.
Hi.
Commissioner John.
Hi.
Commissioner Roberts.
Hi.
Commissioner Timmerman.
Hi, and the motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you all.